I'd like to call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Falls Church on Monday, April 8th, 2013. If you'd please rise and pledge allegiance with me.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome. Veronica, if you'd call the roll, please.
Ms. Berry?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Kalin?
Here.
Mr. Pepe? Oh, Mr. Pepe is absent. Mr. Snyder is absent. Mr. Tartar?
Here.
And Mayor Baruch?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
All right, if I can get a motion to adopt the meeting agenda.
Mayor, I move to adopt the meeting agenda.
If I can have a second, please. Thank you. Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, guys have it. The meeting agenda is adopted, and we have several proclamations this evening, believe seven to be exact, and given that we've got a public hearing after this, fortunately, I'm going to do my best to summarize all of them so they get equal treatment and we can make sure that we have enough time for the public comments, and then we'll do a photo op after each one. The first one that I have is proclaiming, declaring April 2013 as Donating Life Month because almost 2,000 people in our area are in need of an organ transplant. The Washington regional transplant community has been educating the public for 25 years about the need for organ donors. Now therefore, I, Nader Baruch, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim April 2013 as Donate Life Month. And who's going to be accepting? Please come forward, if there's any comments you want to make.
My name is Federico Farco, and I'm about five years old. Five years because I received my liver transplanted almost five years ago. I had my transplant in Los Angeles, and I was, in January, I received a call from the hospital, then they found beside the liver, then he was a disease, had a disease, I had also cancer. So immediately, they come in in the hospital and they shot with a laser, and magically, they just destroyed the cancer, and it didn't come back. So then during 2008, I was waiting, I'd been called seven times to the hospital with a possible organ available for me, but he was always sorry, the liver was too fat, and he went to another hospital because my hospital, they were doing in conjunction with other four hospitals. Then on September, I finally received mine, and they immediately called me, I went to the hospital, they just put me to sleep, 11 hours after, I woke up, and, but I was still obviously groggy with all drugs that they give you during the operation. And on the second day, my surgeon came and see me, and he wanted to know exactly how much pain I had and where was the pain. And so jokingly, I said to him, "Are you sure you operate me the other night? Because I don't feel any pain." And it was such a good experience, and God was looking to me because I was only three days on ICU and three days on rehabilitation floor, and then they kicked me out of the hospital. They said, "Go home, you're okay." I was taking about 20 medication a day, but at the end of the first anniversary, I was down to only one, which is the anti-rejection pill, Prograf, which I left to take for the rest of my life. It's a small, it's a small given, with having the life back to me, the second chance. It was always the only problem that I had, a year after, some of these tissues that came undone, and I developed phorenea, so they recalled me in hospital, and they put there the new procedure, then it was the softest part of the belly of a pork, and they put it across my belt because they couldn't put the regular mesh that they usually do with hernia. That went fine, I still have three, but I don't want to touch them because that was 10 times more painful than the liver. The liver, I felt nothing. So I'm here on behalf of the WRTC to try to generate people that they want to register to be organ donor. And if some of you already are, I want to thank you on behalf of the WRTC, and if you are not, I would like to ask you to do it, or ask some of your friend to do it. This thing, contrary to several myths, they do only, the organ harvesting only when you die. They don't do it. There are some that they thinking, because they go in hospital and they see, then they says, "Organ donor," they'll just pick up the organ and let him die, you know, I mean, it's a silly way of thinking. But if you could possibly think, then there is one person, every 13 minutes, then join the waiting list, and every day, there are 19 people then die because they cannot wait for an organ to become available. So if you multiply the every 13 minutes one, on the evolution of the 24 hour, there are almost 100 people per day, then they go on a waiting list. Multiplied by 365, we have about 36,500 people, then they go on a waiting list without knowing if they are able to get the gift. I was one of the lucky one, that's why I'm here talking tonight. So the WRTC is committed to push this very good cause, and it's just, as I said, in case you pass and so on, instead of just put it on the ground and lose the organ and so on, it's a good deed, just give it to another fellow human being so he can survive like I did.
Great, thank you very much, and it's a pleasure seeing you again. We saw you last year, and it's great to have you back with us. Could you step forward?
Yeah.
If the rest of the council can join me in a quick photo. Thanks very much. Great seeing you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure. Good luck. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You want to turn around now?
Nope, nope.
Sorry, sorry.
One, two, three.
Great, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And it appears that I have gone a bit out of order in all the excitement this evening. So we should have actually started with the Employee of the Year, so I apologize for that, and I believe that Mr. Richard Parker is going to be presenting that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to present the highest award that the city gives to its employees, the 2012 Employee of the Year, to Carrie Frostick. Her name will be added to this plaque, which just says that the following Falls Church government employees have been chosen to receive the city's highest annual public recognition award in recognition of their outstanding job performance and contribution to the citizens of the community. I'm pleased to have Jerry Barrett and Glenn Stevens from the Employee Review Board, that's the board that we send the nominations. This year, we had six outstanding employees who were nominated, so Human Resources submitted those to the Employee Review Board, and they selected Carrie Frostick. So I'm going to ask either one or both of them to come forward here, and they can read the letter that Carrie will receive as to why they selected her as the 2012 Employee of the Year.
This is dated April this year, and is addressed to Carrie Frostick, and who's the youth, she's supervisor of the Youth Department, Youth Services. Is with great pleasure and sincere thanks for your creativity, hard work, and goal, and city goal accomplishment during 2012, that we congratulate you on your selection as the 2012 Falls Church City Employee of the Year. Your supervision of the Youth Services Department in the library embodies the qualities and ideals that make the library such a great place for children, young people, and families. In addition to the many administrative and managerial tasks that you perform on a daily basis, you promote literacy, inspire the love of reading, encourage learning, respect for diversity, and the betterment of the community. You bring compassion, judgment, sensitivity, and dedication to your work. Your 2012 accomplishments include 31 book discussions at the Alternative Horizons Day School, 17 storytimes at the School for Artistic and Communications Challenge, coordination of the new early literacy center for the Virginia Library, receipt books for School Library Journal, a national publication, oversight the development and maintenance of rich, diverse collections of books, audio books, CDs, and movies for children and young people. Your outstanding work for the city during 2012 improved library services for children, young people, and the families, and helped make Falls Church a better place to be proud of. Therefore, on behalf of Falls Church community, please accept our gratitude for your dedicated work and our congratulations on your success. And it's signed by the three members of the board.
We also have a little monetary gift, which I'll let the mayor hand to Carrie when we take her picture up here.
Month. Because sexual assault affects men, women, and children of all races, culture, educational, economic backgrounds, the month of April has been designated as Sexual Assault Awareness Month to help increase awareness and to prevent crime, educate the public on the serious impacts of racial assault, and to teach the public how to defend themselves through free RAD classes given by the City of Falls Church Police Department. Now therefore, I, Nader Baruch, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, hereby proclaim the month of April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And I believe Sergeant Carter is going to be coming forward?
Mayor, you pretty much summed everything up, but on behalf of the Chief of Police, we'd like to thank you for making this a priority for the city, for making April Sexual Assault Awareness Month. In the 13 years I've been in law enforcement, unfortunately, I've come across a few people whose lives have been turned upside down because they were victims of sexual abuse or sexual assault. And just know that the Police Department takes it very seriously, I take it personally, and that's why I am in charge of the RAD class, where over approximately 700 women have been taught to not only defend themselves, but be smart and try not to put themselves in a situation to be victims. So like I say, we, as a Police Department, we'd like to thank you for making this a priority. And going forward, the logistics right now, we cannot have a RAD class this month because we just had one, but every year going forward, we will have a class, Rape Progression Defense Class, in honor of this month. So, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Very much, and obviously, we're very supportive of the program, and I believe that we had some speaker speaking to it a few weeks ago. So thanks for everything that you're doing and putting forward that program. It's great to hear that there's another one coming up as well.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. If you'd join me with, for a quick photo? 21 Day. MAD, Mothers Against Drunk Driving, has initiated Power Talk 21 Day, a local and national effort to raise awareness of the importance of parents and teens talking together about alcohol in order to reduce the risk and dangers posed to teens and to communities. Now therefore, I, Nader Baruch, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim April 21st, 2013 as Power Talk 21 Day. And this is going to be mailed to MAD, so I'm going to put this into the folder. The next proclamation that I have is a proclamation declaring April 7th through the 13th, 2013 as Community Development Block Grant Week. Community Development Block Grant Week recognizes that just as this year, the CDBG program has helped more than 55 city families with low and moderate incomes and individuals to receive early childhood education and tutoring, assistance for emergency needs, homeownership assistance, and increased energy efficiency. Now therefore, I, Nader Baruch, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the week of April 7th through 13th, 2013 as Community Development Block Grant Week. And I believe, ah! Welcome. I look down and...
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. I'm Steve Sprague, Chair of the Housing Commission, and I'm here with Dana Lewis, our city staff representative, very capable person, and also with Tori McKinney, whom later you will be reappointing to the Housing Commission. We're very pleased with the proclamation spotlighting, highlighting CDBG activities, and tomorrow, at our regular meeting, we will start that meeting visiting one of the project that is funded through CDBG. That's with the Habitat for Humanity, and we'll be going to the Ives House for a walk-through and a presentation on the efforts that's going there. Thank you again.
Thank you. Why don't we do the Fair Housing one next as well? The next proclamation, and we'll do these jointly, is proclamation declaring April 2013 as Fair Housing Month. Fair Housing Month is a reminder of the county's longstanding and city's prohibition against discrimination based on race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sex, elderness, family status, or handicap, and reinforces the city's commitment to the same. Now therefore, it be resolved that I, Nader Baruch, the Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, on behalf of the Housing Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2013 as Fair Housing Month.
Dana Lewis, Housing Program Analyst, just wanted to say thank you for the proclamation, and we will be having a fair housing training this month, and you all are invited to attend. And we will not be having fair housing testing next year, but the city has never received any citations or anything like that regarding fair housing, so we're really proud of our record. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Could you come forward and do a quick little photo?
Good to see you, Karen. One, two, three. One, two.
Thank you. Steve, thanks. Oops.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. And the final proclamation for this evening is a proclamation declaring April 20th, 2013 as Arbor Day. And since this is an environmental issue, I'm going to pass that to Ms. Berry.
City of Falls Church has been designated as a Tree City USA for 35 years, and the celebration of Arbor Day is a longstanding tradition in the city. This year, the pawpaw tree has been selected as the 2013 Tree of the Year by the Falls Church Tree Commission and Department of Public Works.
Thank you. Now thereof, I, Nader Baruch, the Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim April 20th, 2013 as Arbor Day. And I believe Ben Thompson is going to be receiving this. Ben?
I just want to take the opportunity to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council for proclaiming this year's Arbor Day. It's an important legacy that we need to keep going. In 1892, citizens of Falls Church, hand in hand with members of the Village Improvement Society, celebrated the very first Arbor Day in the Commonwealth of Virginia, just down the street here, what we call Frady Park now. And since then, we've celebrated Arbor Day every single year, and in keeping with that, we are the oldest Tree City USA in the state of Virginia, 35 years, and we have an extremely robust tree canopy. And that tree canopy is there in part because those that came before us thought ahead to plant trees and steward them and care for them. So that tree canopy that we have today is, not only increases our environmental quality of our community, but substantially contributes to our community's identity and our community's character. And so with that, I'm really proud to be the arborist of this community and to be out there with the citizens as they did over 120 years ago, to plant trees for the next generation. So I challenge everyone here to join us on April 20th, which is Arbor Day. The program will start at 3:00 PM at Frady Park at the gazebo. However, that morning, we will be doing the Neighborhood Tree Program. It'll be the second planting of the Neighborhood Tree Program. We're going to be starting at, I believe, 8:15. You can go to veepus.org/trees to get all the details about the time it starts and where we're meeting. And we'll be out there, we'll be planting approximately 30 trees that morning, and then doing the Arbor Day celebration that afternoon.
Thanks very much, Ben. Counsel?
One, two, three. One, two, three. Oh. One, two, three. One, two, three. Great, thanks.
And Ben, do we have an alternate location if it's bad weather or raining that day?
We would just do it the next day.
The next day, great.
But all that information will be on veepus.org.
Veepus.org is the place to go to get that information. Thanks very much, Ben. I believe that we have Tori McKinney to be sworn in.
If you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Tori McKinney?
I, Tori McKinney.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia?
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia?
And that I will faithfully and impartially?
And that I will faithfully and impartially?
Discharge and perform?
Discharge and perform?
All the duties incumbent upon me?
All the duties incumbent upon me?
As a member of the Housing Commission?
As a member of the Housing Commission?
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God. Are we married?
Are there any other members of the public that are here to be sworn in? We are on to receipt of public comments and reports. The first speaker slip that I have is from Mr. Tom Clinton regarding DMV-to-go.
Good evening, Mayor Baruch, fellow council members. I just want to remind the citizens of Falls Church and the business owners and nearby guests that the DMV-to-go, the mobile unit, which is a full-service DMV on wheels, will be at City Hall April 23rd from 9:00 to 4:00. And then that same day, we're having a ceremony marking the 7th anniversary of the DMV Select. It'll be 11 o'clock, the DMV Commissioner will be coming up from Richmond, and we'll be having it over at the Community Center. So FYI, thank you.
Thanks very much.
And we can do organ donor, if anybody wants to update their stat.
Thanks very much. The next speaker slip that I have is regarding community energy funding, and Mr. Tim Stevens. Mr. Stevens, I wasn't sure, did you want to go as part of the budget?
No, this is fine.
This is fine.
No, thank you. Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm speaking here on behalf of the Environmental Services Council. City of Falls Church, like many communities around the country and around our region, has participated in community energy activities such as identifying ways to improve the energy efficiency of our buildings and supporting renewable energy by taking up the EPA Green Power Community Challenge. Many of these activities involve volunteer efforts, but like any of the city's board and commission activities, it needs to be sponsored by city staff. The Environmental Services Council Energy Efficiency Climate Change Subcommittee has been the focal point of our community energy activities, and it is functioned by utilizing the time and efforts of a small portion of a couple of members of the city staff. Plans are underway to move these staff members to the Fairfax Water with the sale of the water utility. As we understand it, there's no succession planning included in the new budget to continue city staff sponsorship of community energy activities. Basically, it appears these efforts are to be terminated. In particular, this would appear to end our efforts to implement regional work plans organized through the Council of Governments. Unlike our neighbors, the City of Falls Church would not be part of regional efforts to track and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. A proposal has been made to address this issue through the funding of a new position, a sustainability manager. While this is a worthy approach, I understand the reluctance to fund a new position at this time, which is why I would ask that a way be found to continue funding at existing levels along with reassigning staff responsibilities so that the Energy Efficiency Climate Change Subcommittee has a city staff sponsor, and community energy efforts can continue at current levels. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and council members may have a thought on this, but I think this is something that, thanks for bringing this to our attention, I think it's something that we need to talk about at our upcoming work session. So, Mr. Shields, if you can bring that forward with some alternatives, one that comes to mind is perhaps some of the staff that's being dedicated to storm water, if we end up going that route, can assist in these endeavors, there may be some synergies there and some overlaps? So if you can bring some options forward to the council? So if you can bring some options forward to the council on how we would manage under current staffing levels? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker slip that I have is from Mr. Ralph Yatsko.
Thank you, Mayor Baruch, and members of city council. My name is Ralph Yatsko, and I live at 307 James Street in Falls Church. I am currently the chair of the Climate Change Energy Efficiency Task Group that Tim referred to, and echoing some of what he said, I'd like to speak to some of the same issues with some other information. Also want to note that I'm not sure if it's in your package at this point. I did send, or Tim and I jointly sent a letter on Friday, and I'm not sure if you've had the time to read, that addresses our concerns as far as the sustainability manager position and the programs that Tim cited. So we have that letter as well, and some information beyond our talking points today. I do want to emphasize some of the points that are in that letter and provide a little bit of background on the Climate Change Energy Efficiency Task Group. In 2008, the city council passed two resolutions to move forward on climate change and energy efficiency, TR 844 and Resolution 2008-41. With these resolutions, we joined ICLI, also known as the Local Government for Sustainability Organization, and agreed to implement their five-step program. These steps or milestones include conducting an emissions inventory, setting an emissions reduction target. Milestone three is develop a local action plan to reduce emissions. Milestone four is implement the local action plan. And milestone five is monitor and report on results. This has been our blueprint for our task group for the last several years. Unfortunately, we couldn't have picked a worse time from a financial point of view to start this initiative. Recession, the year that the resolutions were passed, affected city monies and resources available. We applied for our money for climate change and energy efficiency at that time, but this money went to larger jurisdictions like Arlington and Fairfax where it would have more impact. Still, using the ICLI tools, the tools provided by ICLI, and mostly volunteer efforts and some city staff support, we did manage to complete the first milestone, completing a community and greenhouse gas baseline. We did this for 2008, and we've completed it for 2009, 2010, and 2011, and are nearly complete with the 2012 greenhouse gas inventory. We've moved forward and created the groundwork for completing milestones two and three, but did not have the city resources to move this forward in a serious way. The current budget does not fund, does not help move our efforts forward. In fact, it removes what little funding we have, we did have. So besides the areas that Tim mentioned, our ability to continue updating the greenhouse gas inventory will come to a halt, as well as the regional efforts that he mentioned. Besides doing our part on climate change, we feel that significant money can be saved by the city and community through energy efficiency efforts. Most of the other jurisdictions in the northern Virginia area recognize this and have, already have a sustainability coordinator or energy manager. This includes Arlington, Fairfax, Alexandria, and Fairfax City. We would hope that you would find, you would fund the sustainability position, but if this is not possible, please don't cut what money we do have. We would like to at least sustain what we're doing until the financial climate improves. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ralph. The next speaker slip that I have is Mr. Henry Gordon regarding tax assessments.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I represent nobody but me. Sometimes I represent my wife, but not often she sometimes disagrees. I'm here to speak about the proposed increase in property tax assessment, which I'll start out by saying the bottom line, it's lousy. And my principal source of information is the Free Press, which generally gets it right, not always. But doing some back-of-the-envelope mathematics to go from the current rate to $1.41 per $100 assessment is a 17-cent or 12% increase in the property tax rate. That's a pretty steep increase. I understand the principal driver of this increase is a very large increase over the last six years, 26% in the student population, because the schools are the biggest chunk of the budget. And then I asked the, what to me is fairly obvious question, has there been a 26% increase in the population in the city of Falls Church over six years? And I can't find an answer to that question. I don't know if there has been. I would expect it wouldn't exactly match, but there should be some proportional increase to justify that growth. I say this because I lived in California. That's the far-left coast. And it was discovered by the, I believe, the San Diego paper, and it had been going on for 12 to 15 years, that the largest bus stop on the school bus system was an empty lot 100 yards from the Mexican border. And they were educating a fair number of Mexican citizens resident in Mexico. I don't think our school buses go that far, but it does lead to somebody ought to be watching to see that the students we are enrolling are in fact residents. I understand that enrollment requires the showing of either a property sales tax receipt or a rent receipt or some equivalent document. Well, I tried it out at home. I can take a utility bill, run it through my computer scanner, and alter the address, and it's not much work. I also pick up my grandson, who, and I will say, the Falls Church school system is really fun. I pick him up about three times a week at his bus stop. Most of the kids that get off that bus, there's two buses that come, Thomas Jefferson and I don't even remember the other one, about 30-plus children get off every time. But, and most of the time, they're parents, older siblings, somebody's there for them. But there are about three cars that pull up about 10 minutes ahead on the side street, and the children get off and get in the car and go away. Now, they could be going to piano class, they could have soccer. This is anecdotal evidence, it doesn't prove anything. But is somebody checking this data? Well, I think it should be. The second point is more a principled point. I understand, and this is from the Free Press, that the rate he's being asked for by the city manager of $1.41 is essentially got a pad in it, that really, we only need to go about $1.33, but that's so we don't have any emergencies. And I can understand that. Having done budgets myself, I never saw one that didn't have a pad in it, and if I was writing one, I would put a pad in too. But it is a matter of principle that the political authority goes to the elected officials, and it is exercised by money. And I don't want the city manager to have any more money than is absolutely in his budget, because he should come back to the council anytime he has something that needs more. And that's just a philosophical view. Lastly, I have to say, a 12% increase in the property tax when there are no less than four significant major property developments going on, you've got a hotel coming in on Broadway, you've got Harris Teeter in the future on the other side of Broadway, you've got that, I don't know what it was, burned-out building on South Washington that is now fully back in business and fully occupied, and you've got a pretty large development going on on North Washington. All of those should produce significant increases in your property assessment. So why do we need to make a big bite now? And I don't propose solutions, I'm just asking questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gordon. The next speaker slip, and I'm happy to take these, these are, I believe, on budget issues, but I'm happy to take these or when we get to them. The next speaker slip that I have is from Ms. Phyllis Kowinski.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council. My name is Phyllis Kowinski. I live at 215 West Columbia Street in the city of Falls Church. I also am a teacher at Mount Daniel Elementary School. I teach first grade. And I have two children of my own. I have a senior at George Mason and a freshman, so I do have some skin in the game. I will be paying any taxes that go up. I am actually here to speak in support of the school's, the school board's budget. And I'm going to speak primarily as a teacher, but I also feel like I speak as a parent and a citizen of the city. I truly believe that the budget that the school board has presented represents the minimum that we need to keep up with the enrollment growth that we're seeing in Falls Church City. It's not a gold-plated budget. And to sort of demonstrate why I believe that, I'll just give you like a little window into what's happened in my own classroom over the last many years, and I have to believe that this is multiplied from kindergarten through 12th grade throughout the system. When my daughter began first grade in 2001, I won't go every year, I promise, there were about 20 students in her class, I actually looked at her yearbook today, and there were six sections of first grade. That held for about eight years. In 2009, we went up to seven sections of first grade. I think I had some Tartars in my class that year. And again, we were at 20 to 22 students. Those are not super-small classes. It's not like we have private-school-sized classrooms of 16 and 18 kids. They're 20, 22 kids. That was 2009. In 2012, that's this year, three years, we went to seven classrooms of first grade. I have 23 students in my class. Last year, I had 22 students, and I had seven sections of first grade. So I teach first-grade math, and I'm pretty sure that's a, the enrollment, the growth is compressing. It took us eight years to get to seven, it took us three years to get to eight. Hopefully, it won't take us one to get to nine. And I am really not going to stand here and debate where those students came from, why they're here, that's not for me to say. My job is to give them the absolute best education that my own children received in the city of Falls Church, all 23 of them, next year, whatever number. That's my job. But I'm just here to tell you that we're not talking about 16 or 17 students in a classroom. We're talking about 23, and we're at eight. So the class sizes are growing. I do think that the school board has done a great job, the best they can, in minimizing the size of the classes. They're trying to put the money that they have into classroom teachers to make sure that our classes are as small as they can be in accordance with their guiding principles. But where we're having trouble is every, no matter how many kids you have, some need extra support in reading, some need extra support in math. Every year, there is a percentage of those students that need those things. Some need gifted and talented support. I would say, since I've been at Mount Daniel for about six or seven years, we haven't added those things. We've added teachers, we've added, but we haven't added the extra support. So that is still not in the budget, I believe, in many cases this year, because money is just not there. So I'm just going to wrap up by saying I support the school board's budget. I've lived in Falls Church for almost 20 years, paid a lot of taxes. We can debate where the students are coming from, we can debate growth, we can debate how many should be here in the future, but right now, all the students that come into my classroom deserve the same excellent education that my children have had for 12 years. And because of that, I fully support the school board's budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. The next speaker slip I have is from Ms. Mary Beth Connolly.
Hello, I am Mary Beth Connolly. I live at 204 West George Mason Road, and like Phyllis, I have children in the schools, and I've lived in the city 20 years, and I'm also employed by the schools. And I have to say that I am really grateful to be part of the city of Falls Church, because we have so many wonderful services, including the schools, we have parks, and we have clean streets when it snows, and we have a great library, and we have great businesses, and we have a real community that we all really like living in. And another really nice thing about Falls Church is that I can say that I know everybody on city council. And because I know you, and because I've talked to you, I know that you feel the same way about Falls Church, that you really like the community where you live. So thank you for serving on city council. At the first town hall meeting, I asked a question about the size of the fund balance, and since then, there's been coverage of it in the press, and I've looked at different things and talked to different people. And as I've looked at it, I've come to the conclusion that you, seven members of city council, actually have the opportunity to go down as one of the most visionary city councils in the history of Falls Church. Because you can actually, if you do some moving around of money in the budget and looking towards the future, be able to fund the schools and fund the city and fund the parks and the library without having a tax increase. And that really, I think, is every elected official's dream, from Congress to city council here, to be able to do all that without raising taxes for your citizens, which we would all appreciate. So there's enough in this current budget that you can move things around, and I'm not going to go into lots of details, but if you look at page 38 of the budget, there are two reserve funds. One is the Capital Reserve Fund that has $200,000 in it, and one is the Restoration of Fund Balance that has $500,000 in it. Those are things that you might be able to move some money out of into some other expenses. And then if you do take the fund balance and move it from 17% to 15%, you'll come up with some additional funds, and really be able to fund everything that all of your constituents are asking for. So, and then because there are, you know, we have projected revenue and surplus for next year, you may be able to replenish that fund balance, so it gets backed up to 17% if that is what everyone decides is the right amount for a fund balance. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Those are all the speaker slips. Veronica, if you would quickly summarize the comments we've received.
Dr. Steve Rogers suggested decreasing the city's fund balance and bond financing the storm water improvements. He said it was expensive to operate a business in the city because of the property taxes, and he hoped the new projects would increase tax revenue. Jean Donnetza urged the council to hold property taxes at $1.27. Nick Carmonica urged the council to hold property taxes at $1.27. Selena Dakin supported the school's, the school board's budget request. Dave Mercer asked the city to cut expenses and staff to avoid raising taxes. Jonathan Caligio urged council to avoid raising taxes. Brian Rye opposed salary increases and publicly funded pensions for city employees and supported funding the school board's budget request. He was also in favor of keeping a higher fund balance in order to obtain lower interest financing for upcoming CIP projects. Amy Ballard Wood and Charles Wood supported the school board's budget request. And Ralph Yatsko and Tim Stevens, on behalf of the Environmental Services Council and the ESC Climate Change Energy Efficiency Task Group, expressed support for funding a sustainability manager. So next, the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. Hal Morgan raised issues with the proposed Stormwater Utility Fund, specifically regarding the funding and the need for an appeals process. Suzanne Updike expressed support for the proposed Stormwater Utility Fee. Regarding the Harris Teeter Project, Michael Connolly, president of Veepus, expressed support for commercial development of property on major arteries in the city. He provided suggested improvements from the Veepus Board of Directors, including reevaluating the economic analysis, improving the commercial and residential ratio, balancing the scale of the building, streetscape, and surrounding neighborhood, adding more affordable dwelling units, and clarification of stormwater management and LEED certification plans. Carl Anderson opposed the 282 apartments included in the project because the additional residents would destroy the quality of life for Winter Hill residents, increase the student population in the city, and create traffic and parking issues. Scott Kahn expressed support for the Harris Teeter mixed-use project. He had concerns about the effect on parking and traffic in Winter Hill and urged the council to make efforts to mitigate those effects. Regarding the Tanner Hill Reserved Project, Peter Oppenheimer, on behalf of the Environmental Services Council, commended the developer for committing to LEED Silver Certification. The ESC recommended adding bicycle storage and signs directing cyclists to nearby trails, pointing exterior lights downward to minimize light pollution, purchasing renewable energy credits, including more rain gardens and pervious pavers, and installing conduits to add electric car charging stations in the future. Mike Novotny, Chair of the Economic Development Authority, urged the council to approve the project and provided suggested changes, including allowing parking to be accessed by the general public, greater festival street improvements, increased bicycle accessibility, and guaranteed public use of the park space. The EDA also encouraged the developer to use higher-quality building materials. And other issues, Shirley Conick expressed concern about redevelopment of the property at 604 South Oak Street, specifically regarding flooding and the loss of green space in the city, and she asked that the land be considered for use as city, and she asked that the land be considered for use as a park.
Very much, Veronica. We are on to council member requests. Council, any requests or comments? We are on to the report of the city manager to council, Mr. Shields.
Counsel, thank you. I just wanted to briefly report one public event that we'll be hosting on Saturday, April 27th, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM at the Columbia Baptist Church. We will have a presentation of the draft South Washington Street area plan that our Development Services staff have put together. We had a town hall meeting about six months ago on this area plan to get comments or get thoughts as to what the aspirations were for this part of the city in terms of economic development, and we've taken that public input and put that into a draft plan, and we'll present that again on Saturday, April 27th, from 9:00 to 11:00 at Columbia Baptist Church. More information is on the city webpage at www.fallschurchva.gov if you want to learn more about it in preparation for this town hall meeting. That's all I have to report tonight.
Mr. Shields, council members, any questions for the city manager? We're on to business on the agenda. If we can go ahead and read, these are all for just public hearing only, so if we can read all four items, please.
TO 13-07 is an ordinance fixing and determining the budget of expenditures and revenues appropriating funds for the fiscal year 2014, general fund, school operating fund, school community service fund, and school food service fund, water fund, sewer fund, enterprise, and enterprise fund, and affordable housing fund. TO 13-08 is an ordinance fixing and determining the FY 2014 to FY 2018 Capital Improvements Program budget and appropriating expenditure and revenue funds for the fiscal year 2014. TO 13-06 is an ordinance setting the rate of tax levy on real estate, personal property, machinery and tools, and all other properties segregated by law for local taxation in the city of Falls Church, Virginia for the tax year 2013. And TO 13-09 is an ordinance to create Article 7 Stormwater under Chapter 42 Utilities of the Falls Church City Code to establish a stormwater utility.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and, Shields, did you have anything to add before we go ahead and open it up to public comment?
I was just going to note, counsel, just in terms of schedule, so everybody's on the same page, we do have a town hall meeting on Saturday, April 13th, next Saturday, at the Community Center at 10 o'clock, and we'll go from 10 until noon, to both provide an update for the community in terms of the council's work on the budget that I've proposed, and the council is in the midst of its review and making, considering changes to that. And then from there, we'll have one last work session early next week, currently scheduled for Monday, but possibly scheduled for Tuesday night, which would be our final markup for the budget in anticipation of it coming back to the council for final adoption on Monday, April 22nd. I'd be happy to answer any questions. There's been a lot of material put out to council from both the school board and from city staff in response to questions, and we'd be happy to answer any questions about that material and discussion of the process going forward.
Counsel, any questions? Ms. Berry?
Mr. Shields, I just wanted to make sure that I understand the process. During the work sessions, you know, a number of suggestions had come from council, and those have been codified somewhere, that if there's, somebody's been taking notes. And we have one final session, I think, on Thursday, in which the police budget will be considered, and then will it be on the Monday session, where I recall that Mr. Snyder asked this question, will there be a final tally so that we know what we're talking about in terms of adjustments to the budget?
What we'll do is, prior to the Thursday work session, we'll send out a sheet that lists everything that we've heard so far, so that there's a, sort of a balance sheet of the requests of add-ins and other changes that the council has discussed as a markup sheet. And then on Thursday night, we'll have a preliminary markup for council to get consensus on those items, and then we'll come back on that following week with options for accomplishing the council's direction on Thursday night.
And I think on that following week, which would be the 15th, I think we're looking at some possible alternate dates, since both the vice mayor and myself are not available on the 15th. So, I think, Mr. Shields, you were going to get a note out on that, whether the 16th is a possibility.
Yeah.
So we don't, we don't need to, you know, finalize that now, but...
So there might not be one on the 15th?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions, counsel? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. So my question is, is discussion that's going to go on tonight going to inform information that we receive on Thursday, is there anything that's going to be presented at the Saturday town hall that's never different from what the public heard at the previous town hall? I'm new to this, so I'm trying to understand at what point, you know, we begin to put on the table some of these big questions that we've talked about and have a serious discussion about whether they're in, out, up, or down.
I think where things stand right now is there shouldn't be any real additional information that happens during the town halls that the city is going to be putting out. It's another opportunity for us to inform the public of the manager's proposal. Certainly, the public is going to be commenting and providing additional information. That's why we then have a markup following that, so we can consider the matters that are discussed by our citizens at the town hall. So I think this evening, again, I think we're going to open it up for public comment. We've already had some comments this evening, both in writing and verbally, and then my proposal is when we get to business, not on the agenda, or I'm sorry, when we get to council member comments, we utilize that time on the agenda to discuss where people are at. We talked about people, you know, stepping forward and giving us a range or items that they want to begin to discuss. So it's, you know, the purpose of that discussion is to flag items and provide the range that we're looking at, not to come to any conclusion, but really tee up Thursday and then the following meeting after that. For the markups.
Very good, thank you. Thank you.
So that's how I'm envisioning the process. Any other questions or comments about process? All right, why don't we go ahead and open this, all four items up for public comment? Are there any members of the public that wish to address these items? I'm going to go ahead and close these items for public comment, and if we can then move on to the next item, which is up for first reading, it's an ordinance.
TO 13-10 is an ordinance to amend Chapter 28, miscellaneous offenses, Article 7, weapons of the Falls Church City Code, by the addition of Section 28-202, discharge of pneumatic guns in certain places prohibited, exceptions.
Mr. Foster?
Counsel, this was discussed at last Monday's work session. It's an amendment to City Code to regulate use of pneumatic guns, which includes BB guns, by juveniles. This is pursuant to State Code authority. Just to summarize, under this proposed ordinance, the use of pneumatic guns would be prohibited in any public areas of the city. It would be regulated on private property such that any juvenile of the age of 16 or under would need to be supervised by a parent or guardian, and reasonable care would need to be taken by anyone using a pneumatic gun on private property. With that, I'm certainly available to answer any questions you may have.
Council members, any questions on this? Mr. Duncan?
Just one, I'm sure that this is covered, but there was some discussion after the work session of pneumatic nail guns, which are used in construction situations. It's impossible to conceive that one would be using such a thing without adult supervision, but just wondered where a nail gun fits into the universe here.
I could look into that further, Mr. Duncan, but I would refer you to the definition in the city, proposed City Code amendment that's based on the Virginia Code, and it limits a pneumatic gun to any implement designed as a gun that will expel a BB or pellet by action of pneumatic pressure.
On a nail, okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Since we have Dr. Jones with us, I wanted to see if, Dr. Jones, you had received any comments at all about this item? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah, really, the comments that I have had have been right along with what you've brought up, and as to your opinions of others, but as well as at the work session, and I think all I have heard is supportive of what you've brought up.
And if, just if you can keep us informed, Dr. Jones, of any comments you're getting. Thank you very much. Counsel, any other questions? If I can get a motion, and then we'll go ahead and open it up. And one other question, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that the chief had anything to add about this at all?
I did on the spot.
Great, and I believe the police department was supportive of the initiative as well?
We are supportive, and we'll be here in the second reading, and hopefully, the locals will show them the process.
Great, thank you very much, Chief. If I can get a motion, please?
Mayor, I move to approve TO 3010 on first reading, schedule a second reading and public hearing for April 22nd, 2013, and advertise the same according to law.
Thank you. If I can get a second?
Second.
Ms. Berry on the second. Any comments, counsel, before we take a vote?
Yes.
Okay. If I can have the roll call?
Ms. Berry? Yes. Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Tarter?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel.
We are on to business, not on the agenda. So that would be budget discussions. So I'm going to turn it over to my fellow council members to discuss what their thinking is, and I think probably the best way to do it is just going down the line. So, Phil, I saw you sort of begin to chew at some ideas. Should we start with you? And we can, we can have a couple rounds.
You know, I'm used to the Capitol Hill method of, you know, the senior members speak first and say all the wise things, and then the junior people just, you know, come in after everyone's left the room and say, you know, amen to that. I have some things that I wanted to say, but I certainly don't need to go first, if anyone else would like to.
Anybody have a burning desire to go first? All right, somebody needs to go first.
Okay, you asked for it. First, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to the many citizens who are sharing their thoughts about spending priorities and the level of taxation. It's all helpful information. While we're now arrived in the month when a budget is to be approved, it seems we still have a good bit of talking to do and some learning also about some big issues. So as we do that, I look forward to further comment and dialogue about spending and taxes, really, not only through April 22nd, but beyond that, because our action on the FY 1314 budget is, I think, just one stop along the way of shaping the priorities of our city. And that takes me to the one thought I'd like to impart. With this budget we approve, we are going, I think, to begin to address a range of pressing needs in a balanced and measured way, but the full job we must do is not the work of just one budget. It requires a sustained effort over several years to give us the best chance of doing the work correctly, and in a manner that's mindful of our community's needs and aspirations. Mindful of the financiers we expect to approach for substantial bond funding of schools and municipal facilities, mindful of our city and schools' employees, and mindful, most of all, of our schoolchildren and our taxpayers. In response to the impact on the city of the Great Recession and the water system litigation, and because of concerns about the pension liabilities and our looming infrastructure needs, in recent years, we reduced the percentage of the budget going to the schools to 40.5% from a typical level of 46% or 47%. At a time of growing enrollment, we restocked the reserve fund at a very aggressive pace to its maximum goal of 17% and beyond. We reduced city-side operating expenses and personnel and postponed consideration of big capital projects, and new high school expansions of City Hall and the library, stormwater infrastructure, and we dramatically increased the tax load on our citizens and businesses. Now, on each of these counts, we hear passionate arguments, great vehemence and zeal, from the schools who want to be back at 40% right now, from proponents of a $12 million reserve fund who say it must not be touched, that two months is an absolute minimum, or the bond market will shun us, from proponents of a new stormwater management utility, which would have a new staff funded by a new tax to support their work, which is represented as the only way to ensure that the city will do the work on water quality and quantity that must be done to spare us from punitive fines by the federal government. I'm here to ask for flexibility on one, two, and three above, because as important as all of those things are, and they are all important, what I want to support April 22nd is what I talked about last spring when I campaigned, keeping our schools and city services excellent and maintaining a reasonable tax rate. In my judgment, we are not yet hearing enough reasonability in our discussion of the tax rate. I tried to make an appeal for it with my vote to advertise a rate lower than the proposed 141. I think my vote did not speak clearly enough, so let me be plain. I want the tax rate to hold at 127. Even that rate means higher taxes. Because of appreciation in property values, the average tax bill will go up by about 3%. So even if we hold the tax rate at 127, and if the new stormwater utility taxes imposed, the average homeowner will pay $650 more in taxes than he or she did last year. If the tax rate is set at 131, the average owner pays almost $900 more, and if the tax rate is set at 133, the average homeowner pays more than $1,000 than last year. I'm sure you've been reading your constituent mail just as closely as I have. In short time, Falls Church has increased taxes dramatically. As recently as 2008, the rate was just above a dollar. This year, we advertised 141, there's talk that 160, even 190 are on the horizon. In the current economic environment, with sequester, furlough, pay reductions, erratic employment news, I think that we need to seriously consider what we're talking about here. So finally, before we go to taxpayers with any request for higher taxes, here are some marks that I hope the counseling community can hit. One, we must approve the Rushmark and Lincoln Projects in May and get those projects into the pipeline to produce revenues through permit fees, proffers, and ultimately, tax revenues. Two, we must resolve to identify, evaluate, and approve in FY 1314 at least two new projects of similar scope to those mentioned above. Three, we must campaign this summer and fall for approval of the water sale referendum. In concurrent with that, we must put in place during this fiscal year a structure and a process for planning use of the newly annexed land, which is where we will construct a new high school and develop a West City Commercial Complex whose revenue must cover annual debt service cost on the bond for the schools. Four, as part of the budget council approves April 22nd, we must commit to embarking on a process of continuous collaboration with the school board after April 22nd to finish funding the schools on met-critical needs, as identified in the FY 1314 budget request, as soon as is practical, with an understanding that any surplus revenues from FY 1213 shall be shared 46% to 54% between schools and city. In short time, Falls Church has increased taxes dramatically. As recently as 2008, the rate was just above a dollar. This year, we advertise 141. There's talk that 160, even 190 are on the horizon. In the current economic environment, with sequester, furlough, pay reductions, erratic employment news, I think that we need to seriously consider what we're talking about here. So finally, before we go to taxpayers with any request for higher taxes, here are some marks that I hope the counseling community can hit. One, we must approve the Rushmark and Lincoln projects in May and get those projects into the pipeline to produce revenues through permit fees, proffers, and ultimately tax revenues. Two, we must resolve to identify, evaluate, and approve in FY1314 at least two new projects of similar scope to those mentioned above. Three, we must campaign this summer and fall for approval of the water sale referendum. In concurrent with that, we must put in place during this fiscal year a structure and a process for planning use of the newly annexed land, which is where we will construct a new high school and develop a West City commercial complex whose revenue must cover annual debt service cost on the bond for the schools. Four, as part of the budget council approves April 22nd, we must commit to embarking on a process of continuous collaboration with the school board after April 22nd to finish funding the schools' unmet critical needs, as identified in the FY1314 budget request, as soon as is practical, with an understanding that any surplus revenues from FY1213 shall be shared forty-six to fifty-four percent between schools and city, and that any positive variance in schools' FY1213 accounts shall be allocated to unmet critical needs at the schools' discretion, subject to formal approval by council. I'm hopeful, even in tough times for the schools, we've expanded TJ, and in this budget we commit to the Cherry Street facility, helping us serve students in the younger years, where it's especially important to have proper facilities that meet community expectations. I think we can get schools on a time-certain path to forty-six or forty-seven percent, meeting all needs identified as critical. We can meet the most critical needs in general government, including employee raises that are reasonable in the current economic environment. We can set a course for sustained growth and new revenues. We can retain a reserve fund sufficiently impressive to gain favorable terms on bond issues, and when we float those bonds, we can build municipal and school facilities that will meet our community's needs well into the city's second century. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. That was eloquently said, and I think that lets us know you're thinking about where you're at with the rate. The next piece of this is gonna be, how do we get to the targets or the ranges that members are talking about? I think that's the second piece of the guidance that we gave the city manager that we unanimously approved, is figuring out where the levers are to get there, so. Mr. Kalin?
Thank you.
That was a marvelous introduction.
I'm still struggling with some of the earlier comments, which is $127, and we maintain excellent service for city-provided services, and we take care of the school needs, and we don't affect the tax rate. I'm not sure how the mathematics or the arithmetic of that works. I think in mathematics, it's called an over-determined model. Something is gonna have to give, but I do not see how all three will be achieved at the same time. So I'll be interested in what other members have to say on exactly, if they have ideas on how those, that $127 and the basic full funding of the other activities will take place. But maybe others have ideas that I haven't thought of.
Kalin, is there a range that you're thinking of?
A range of taxes, or what?
Yep.
Depending on how the discussion goes, a number, I do agree that there needs to be flexibility, and I do recognize this, but has been an increase in enrollment in the schools, which requires some consideration. But I don't see the whole thing being done by tax rates, and I certainly don't see how we're going to cut city expenditures unless, following the budget guidance that was agreed to, where we close programs, at which point then the city council has to speak to which programs the city will disassociate itself from. But short of that, I don't see the numbers that the city manager can provide that would cover the gaps that have been created.
Ms. Barry?
Like Mr. Duncan, I also took a moment to put my thoughts down on paper. When I look at the budget documents and consider the very important material therein, I am once again convinced of the value of multi-year projections. What disturbs me about this budget is that the thinking is so immediate and prescribed, when what we as council and citizenry should be thinking about is how we are going to manage this year, next year, and the years to come in some sort of coherent continuum. The school division has signaled their understanding of this dilemma, perhaps unintended, but nonetheless important, by asking for a significant hike in their transfer, stating the rise of enrollment and the need to consider class size. I believe that class size is an important determinant in successful learning. I'm also aware that there are any number of unmet needs in this school budget, which this school budget doesn't include. And equally real, on the city side, we are looking at a budget that doesn't meet needs, a budget which doesn't keep our city whole, in fact, likely undermines important civic functions, including public safety. Our library, the heart of this city, isn't made whole. Our city staff is overworked and stretched to the limit. In other words, this budget doesn't make anyone really happy and doesn't really solve our problem. Our problem continues to be too few durable revenue streams, a small population, a limited geographic footprint between two metro stops. We have a population that, despite these limitations, expects world-class service, schools and city services. Some of that population is ready and able to pay for those services and fully accepts that role. Others choose not to or simply cannot. I will vote to solve these problems incrementally and along a continuum. These deficits will not be solved in a year, and the shock to our collective system of a double-digit tax increase is unnecessary and unproductive. Over the next several years, and perhaps long into the future, this and future councils will have to vote on regular tax increases, as distasteful as that may be, because what the schools have signaled, and our own city staff have signaled, is that the needs will continue to outstrip what we can reliably produce through development and natural growth. And in the event that the mayor is going to ask me what my range is, I, like Mr. Kalin, am waiting for some final numbers. There's some, we have a meeting on Thursday, we have some numbers to look at, we have a list of unmet needs that perhaps will come before council again, and when we receive those data, I certainly am prepared to disclose to the mayor my sense of next steps.
Thank you, Ms. Barry.
Mr. Tarter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Even without an increase in the tax rate, our residences and businesses will face significant increases in their taxes. As we've heard, the assessments are going up at approximately three percent. The Storm Silver Fund, if it were to be approved, which appears to be likely, will result in sizable increases, you can call them fees, you can call them taxes. For the past sixty-five years, we've called them taxes. But that will also be an additional burden on the folks who live and work here in the city. We also need to be cognizant and remain competitive with our neighbors as far as tax rates go. Arlington, Fairfax, both have rates significantly below what ours are now and what they might be if we were to seek an increase in the rates, which, again, bodes for aggressively working on economic development. I agree that we need to have more of these projects in the pipeline. We need to get them through the pipeline quicker and have more certainty as the outcome. So I support the area planning, which I think will also be helpful to that end. We have some painful decisions ahead of us to make. As I've mentioned at prior hearings, there really are three elements here. We have the school budget, we have the city budget, and we have the tax rate, and that's about it. And when one goes up, the others go down, or vice versa. And so, it's a difficult time, I think, for all of us. But to that end, I would ask, as I've done previously, for the city manager to take a hard look at the budget and give us some options for proposed savings. The decisions will be ours, but I think we need to be presented with some options, which we have not been in the past. When we gave guidance to the city manager many months ago, that was before we had a school budget before us. And we have one now. It's higher than I think many people had anticipated, and I, for one, would like to see some options on the table on the city side to see how we might take a hard look, non-public safety items, but take a hard look at some items on the city side of the budget, so that we can at least consider them. School enrollment has been sore, and I think that's clear to everyone. We've heard from the superintendent and a number of other folks, and it's painfully clear that the schools have some demonstrated needs, real needs, and we need to go, we need to help them get there. I don't know whether it's gonna be a one-year jump or a multi-year jump, but we need to get them farther along that path than they are right now. I think the surplus is something also that we should consider. Last year, we had a significant surplus. This year, it's unclear what the surplus will be, but we're probably gonna get an inkling on Thursday, I'm told, as to what it is today. And I think that's something that should come into the mix. To the extent we're unable to fully fund priorities that we want to fund, if there are, in fact, excess funds or surplus in the coming months, I think we should make a commitment to go ahead and take care of the needs we weren't able to meet at this point, but we may be able to several months from now. So, I think that's about all I've got. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Snyder?
Thanks. First of all, I want to thank all of our citizens who have expressed their views tonight and have expressed their views in writing. I just got back from a business meeting in Houston, Texas, with the National Association of Insurance Commissioners, so that's why I was late today. And I have some business travel between now and the conclusion of the budget, so I guess it's incumbent upon me to be a bit more specific a bit earlier. First of all, virtually everything I've heard tonight is sensible, rational, and is entirely legitimate. The problem is that ultimately with a budget, you have to get past generalities and sentiment to the reality of setting the tax rate. Everything that's been said, and I said it when I first saw the numbers, that there are a lot of people in our city and around this region that are hurting right now, and we have to be sensitive to that. Others just don't have the kind of income that goes up every year, and so they're gonna be affected as well. On the other hand, I think the schools have made a very strong case for a significant increase. The numbers are just, they're irrefutable and very consistent with what the region, the rest of Northern Virginia is seeing. So, we either allow our schools to begin to deteriorate, or we do what we have to do, as we've always done, to adequately support them. Second issue regarding the city. I think the city has been cut fairly dramatically the last few years. I'm gonna be very reluctant to build it back up again, but the fact of the matter is, the city, like the schools, has to perform. The police have to respond, the employees need to be compensated, we need to meet the challenges for the future. And that includes the sustainability issue that I heard talked about tonight, because that may actually pay us back in the long term. I view that as part of the infrastructure of the city going forward. Next issue is the fund balance. By my training, while it's somewhat different from my colleague, who spent most of his life in banking activities, I've spent most of mine in insurance, but either way, you realize the importance of adequate capitalization and adequate fund balance. So I'm not sure what cuts we can make there without jeopardizing where we can go in the future in terms of supporting our bond issues, but I'll be willing to listen. I've listened to the arguments made. However, it appears that our fund balance for a small jurisdiction is not out of line as it currently sits, and so I'm gonna be reluctant to depart too much from the standard that the professionals say. I'll keep looking at that. I hope we can find savings there. One thing I'm not prepared to do at this point is go above the total amounts that our two managers have recommended, and I think we need to find, if there are some needs that are not being met, for example, the cable TV station and a couple other needs, I think they should be within the 133 and still fund significantly the city's needs and the schools' needs. And again, significant increases on both sides. So I want to emphasize the positive here, which is, where I want to come out is a lower-than-average, a lower-than-advertised tax rate, which I think we can get to. We're gonna need the cooperation of the other elected, our other elected body and our managers to try to get us to actually what they propose, and again, significant increases in the fund balance, significant, I think, restoration of some of what had to be cut during the financial crisis on the city side, and maintaining the quality of the schools, and those are all fundamental. With regard to the stormwater issue, I agree that we need to address the infrastructure on a sustainable basis going forward because of climate changes and because of the aging infrastructure, and so I agree with a separate fund. I am yet not convinced that the amount of money that's been talked about is what we need to do this year, and I'm not convinced that the particular program currently envisioned with a very significant number of additional staff is the best expenditure of the money. Finally, the most attractive part of this program, I think, is the ability of people to take action to get to the underlying problem, and I've heard repeatedly that that's not spelled out sufficiently for them. So, I don't know in what context we can do that work, how fast we can do it, whether we can do it within two weeks, but I think we need to move forward on that, but we've gotta get the details right, and I'm not satisfied the details are right yet. And I've actually heard from some citizens who have been very strong supporters of this from the beginning saying the same thing. So where do I want to end up ultimately? I'd like a tax rate at the 133 recommended by the city, that includes the school board budget, that includes the city manager. I would like to fold within that a couple absolutely fundamental things that we need to fund. I would ask for cooperation from our two major managers to bring that about. It does involve some shifting back into the budget, the cable TV station, and maybe a couple other comparatively small expenditures to get it to that level. And then with regard to the stormwater fund, I've not yet settled on the amount of money and exactly what ought to be in that fund, but I think we need to do it. I think the case has been made. So stepping back, I think the case has been made that we need to, we need additional funding to do basic city services, and that includes fire protection and other things like that. I think the case has been made by the schools that we simply have a population issue that we've gotta deal with or suffer decline in the quality of the schools. So on the general government side, you either don't do what you're supposed to do as a matter of general government, or on the school side, you see your schools deteriorate. Neither, in my view, are acceptable. With regard to the fund balance, we have to be prudent, we have to be where the bond rating agencies and others are gonna give us the fundamental amount that we make, that we need to have. I would certainly look if it's possible to prudently reduce that and build it back up, but I'm not sure that's been made. And finally, with regard to the stormwater program, I think we should do it. I think there are a lot of details to be worked out, and I'm not convinced that the number being talked about and the number of staff versus actual projects, actual concrete is where we need to be with that. So, I'd like to work on getting the tax rate down, but I'm not gonna sacrifice city services, I'm not gonna sacrifice the quality of our schools, I'm not gonna put us back into a financially imprudent situation where we don't look like we're an attractive place to invest in. Finally, let's talk about the economic development projects, because I'm supportive of them as well. Prudent budgeting, and we have followed that in that case, includes none of that, if I'm right. It does not include an assumption on the Harris Teeter, it does not include an assumption on Lincoln. Does it, I don't think it includes an assumption on the hotel, does it?
Let me ask Mr. LeContre, in terms of the revenue forecasts with respect specifically, I think the Northgate, all the ones that have not been through the SE process are clearly not in the revenue forecast, i.e. the Harris Teeter project and Lincoln. But in terms of the hotel, which is under construction, and Northgate, which is under construction, if I could ask Mr. LeContre to speak to how they're treated in the revenue forecast.
The short answer is, they're in the projections going forward, but they're not included in 14 at all.
Okay, so Harris Teeter is not in 14, Lincoln is not in 14. Is the hotel in 14?
No.
No. So, that's a prudent way to go, but it also suggests when they come online, I'm gonna be looking to return that money, meaning or continuing to meet our needs, but find a way to get it back to the taxpayers. That's gonna be an objective. But I don't question, for now, the prudence of following the course that you're following, but I think we need to keep that firmly in mind as to where all that is.
Let me just add a little bit more information on that. Where this comes to bear is what we assume for the June billing of real estate, that old issue. And so, what we do assume for the June billing is that there'll be a two-and-a-half, two-and-a-half percent increase in assessed value citywide. And so, part of our thinking in terms of that two-and-a-half percent is that with the Northgate and the hotel coming online, that's informed our thinking about that two-and-a-half percent, because we're concerned about the market growing much more than one percent. That's what the assessors in all of the region are basically saying.
And if I can try to put it simplistically also, is if we're looking at a tax rate increase, which some members at least have indicated that they're open to, it is gonna result in a surplus, just given the way that we do our billing potentially. But we also can't pretend it's not there. pretend it's not there, or else we don't pass a balanced budget.
Right.
So, you know, I've raised this numerous times about whether we want to fix that, once and for all, rip the Band-Aid off. There's pros and cons to it. I'm sitting up here for the last, however long it's been, you know, I think it's very difficult for the community to understand. It's very difficult for members to understand who aren't doing the budget process day in and day out. So, it leads to a lot of confusion. I'm still open to the thought of just ripping that Band-Aid off, moving it once and for all, and squaring it away, but I'm not wedded to that. There's pros and cons to it, but I just want members to be aware of how it works. So, if you're thinking surplus is going to sort of be this magic bullet kind of thing, it's a little bit more complicated and nuanced than that. But whenever you increase the tax rate, you are going to end up in a surplus situation, given our budget calendar, unless the market essentially tanks, which we don't think it's going to, we hope. Right? Did I summarize that correctly, Richard?
That's correct.
Okay. In as layman's terms as I can?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right.
Let me just finish. I mean, I have long been concerned about a tax rate that begins to spiral upward so quickly and so dramatically that it makes Falls Church less attractive to people who may not have the connection with the schools, for example. So, I'd love to get to the 127. I honestly don't see prudently how we can do that. And still, maintain the quality of our schools, maintain a prudent fund balance, maintain the quality of the city services, and begin to address infrastructure, things like that. I just don't see how we can get to 127. My target is going to be to try to keep it at 133, and if we can get it lower, great. But that's where I am right now, and subject to additional input from our experts and from the community. And I want to thank again the thoughtfulness of all the council members, because I've had an opportunity to talk to each and every one of them about these issues, and they are struggling with them every bit as much as every person in this city and paying a great deal of attention to what they're saying. And so, I see some positive movement here, some positive discussion, but ultimately, we are going to have to get to a number, and hopefully putting some thoughts about getting to a number and what that would be would be helpful to my colleagues. Thank you.
Mayor Snyder, I think I put out my range last go-around. So, I too want to hold the tax rate to the lowest possible amount. You know, I frankly don't see how we hold to $1.27 unless we do some draconian cuts or take somewhat imprudent measures dealing with the fund balance. I'm not willing to do that on a one-time basis, knowing what that's going to mean down the road for us, especially if we're going to the bond markets. You know, you can use fund balances to smooth out one year where it's a penny or two, but not at the amounts that we're talking about. I certainly wouldn't be supportive of, knowing what we need to do on the capital project side, what's coming down the pike. And again, the budgets that we're talking about are year in, year out. It's not like we're trying to solve a problem using the fund balance for a one-time decrease in assessments, et cetera. Be using it for ongoing operating budgets. It's not where I'm at. I don't think that's prudent. It's not. It's not how we should be conducting city business if it was for capital, et cetera. That's something I think we can certainly talk about, but that's not where we're at right now. The way I'm envisioning this discussion, or at least how I'm conceptualizing it in my mind, and I was trying to figure out, does this fit within a three-legged stool, and it doesn't anymore. So, the way I'm, for the benefit of my fellow council members, the way I'm looking at this is what we do on stormwater, what we do on fund balance, and what we do on any surplus that that leads to, and then also on the operating direct budget side, the school and general government. So, talk a little bit about the surplus. We'll get more information about that, so I'm not prepared to go into detail about that until we see that. I have some thoughts I'd like to just share with council members if there is a surplus. I think it would be beneficial to begin to utilize those and put them towards some of our capital, which we've been committed to doing, but I'd like to see that. But that's sort of my initial thinking about what we would do. It's similar to what we tried to do last year on the surplus. Two, on stormwater, I do think that the enterprise fund is what I'm gravitating towards. The exact budget, the amount, I think still needs a little bit more work, but I'm generally supportive of that. So, I wouldn't want to see that necessarily start creeping into what we're talking about on the operating budget. I think it's time that we went towards the stormwater enterprise route, which does have an impact on the budget that we're talking about. And I've already made my comments as far as the fund balance issue goes, so I won't go there. On the schools and general government operating budgets, I share some of Vice Mayor's, Snyder's comments. Do you think that there's a couple items that we must fund that are non-starters, that need to get funded, like the cable TV? Transparency is part of what we do, and that's a great asset to the community to do that. So, I'm not prepared to cut in that area. I think that needs to be sorted out and absorbed between our budget on the general gov side and also on the school side. So, and how we get there, I'm still working through, but at least that, you know, I think doing the math, I think we can get there. As the Vice Mayor suggested, at 133, we may need to do a bit more, a bit less, a penny or two, higher or lower, plus or minus. That's what I'm thinking. Mr. Callen?
Thank you. This is, it's quite a useful discussion. I'd like to set the record straight on one point and then comment on something that Ms. Barry mentioned. Part of the problems that we're receiving today, or we experience today, are the decision to spend $1.4 million last year. Had we left it where it was proposed by the Budget and Finance Committee, four-and-a-half cents would not be discussed right now. That would have been taken care of because we would have had the funding. Hold on, Dave. Hold on, I'm not finished. You took it out of the city side effectively, and now you're asking the city side to take more money out, and that is something that we need to understand. We're in this pickle in part in the numbers of 133 because of that decision. Okay. Now, I'd like to discuss what Ms. Barry had mentioned regarding the long-term nature of this. The school budget probably will grow, I don't know, six to eight percent going out for the foreseeable future, and revenues are unclear how much they're going to continue. So, we will likely be facing continued stress on tax rates for at least the next three or four years. And if the $100 million bonding goes forward, I guarantee you there'll be terrific stress on the city's tax rate. So, we're not facing a particularly rosy outlook, even with the economic development that we want. Except for the Harris Teeter, our economic development generates revenues in the hundreds of thousands, but the increases in the school system generate costs in the millions.
Right.
So, there is a mismatch between the projected revenue increases and the projected expenditure increases. So, we're going to be facing this going forward. And in that regard, while I did say, and I do agree, there has been obvious increases in moment, and there has to be some recognition of that in the budget. What the manager presented was already a 6% growth, and now it would go up to 13% total. And I'm not sure that that is sustainable. And while it seems that we're asking the city to see where it can find savings and cut, I don't hear an equivalent asking for the schools to consider what they could also bear in this process of trying to get the square peg through the round hole, if that is an apt analogy. As a result, we can take care of, perhaps we'll be able to do it this year, but I don't see, Dave, in all honesty, that we're going to be able to promise tax rebates or tax rate cuts in the near future, not within five years. I don't see how we're going to do that with the revenue and expenditure patterns that we're facing. And I would ask the manager, the city manager, if I may, the city manager, hello? Just one second. When we were asked for options, I would prefer that you'd not present options. You can just prevent, you could just present, if you want to save X million, here's what you would have to cut to save those millions, rather as options, that you're giving us choices and so forth. You just tell us, if you want to save a million dollars, here's what, here's how you can, here's what you'd have to cut to do it, but nothing that looks like a recommendation or a proposal by the city side. Thank you.
Mr. Tark?
You're good.
Okay. Other council members? Phil?
Is this the second round that you referred to, or are we, are we wrapping up?
Well, I hope we're wrapping up.
Okay.
Are we in store for number two?
No, no, I don't have a speech as long as that. That which I began with, you'll be pleased to know. You know, this is a tough spot, being in a council, manager, former government. Obviously, you know, I don't know the line item of the budget well enough to suggest specifically where cuts might be made, nor is it my job to know that. I had a conversation with the manager late last week, where I offered a few suggestions based on my knowledge of the community, but, you know, even I acknowledge they don't add up to any significant amount of money. So, I mean, every amount of money is significant, but I guess, I guess what I would ask is, if we're at 133, am I accurate to say that the average homeowner would pay, and we established a stormwater fund as is contemplated right now, is it accurate to say the average homeowner would pay more than $1,000 in taxes than he or she did last year? That's a specific question, which does not need to be answered now, but which I would like to know if it's the case. I used my home as the example, because mine is the average assessed home, I think. Six, 610-800. Yeah, okay. So, the figures that I quoted in my lengthy speech, which everyone hung on every word of at the beginning.
We did, Phil, we did.
Referred to that. Well, thank you. I appreciate that. But no, seriously. I guess the next thing I would ask, the mayor suggested that it was a nice, broad goal speech, but perhaps lacking in enough specifics. And while it's difficult for me to offer specifics because of what I said about that not really being my job, I'm sensitive to, you know, I want the tax rate to be 127, and somebody else goes and figures it out. So, I guess I would ask here if it's appropriate for one member to ask the staff to provide us information that would be built around a school board increase of 10%, a city increase that is 20% lower than that which was requested. Just, I'm not suggesting that cuts be across the board, but that the bottom line end up at that number. That would be the second leg of the stool. The third thing what I ask for is a serious consideration and a game plan for developing a stormwater management plan, but deferring collection of the tax fee, whatever you want to call it, until such time that we really believe that the plan is where it needs to be, to be taken, you know, public. And finally, that we really scrub the revenue numbers and identify the amount of surplus that we're going to end this fiscal year end, because I'm perfectly willing to go through another round of what we did last summer. I thought it was very constructive for the community to understand the various carryover funds and surpluses and so forth, and I think the outcome that we ended up with was a very positive outcome. We, you know, shined some attention on the fact that there was some money in the schools' accounts that was, had been carried over from year to year, and that that was a perfectly legitimate practice, and that members on council were uncomfortable with it. And basically, in the past year, they spent that money down, and so they don't have that money anymore. I think we might do to follow some of the same kind of example in our use of some of the positive variance funds that we have. So, you know, really scrub, certainly pay back to surplus, pay back to fund balance. I cannot see, okay, well, just pay back to fund balance is the number I would like to see, and I'd like that deployed to some other use, preferably to give taxpayers relief. You know, those are the, I guess, four major things that I would ask for. Philosophically, I think we're all trying to achieve the same thing, you know, trying to do as much as we can with the operating budget this year, and we're trying to get ourselves in position to go to the markets and get a decent interest rate on building a lot of buildings, starting, probably not next year, but the year after that. Now, how best do we do that? Do we basically, you know, collect as much as we possibly can from the taxpayers and collect that money in a fund that is going to awesomely impress the bond market, or do we try to do what is prudent to do to impress the bond market and leave as much in the hands of the taxpayers for as long as we can? And I want to vote for a budget that does the latter, because that's just philosophically where I'm at. Thank you.
Other council members? Mr. Callen?
Again, to confirm a point I'd like to make clear, if they're relatively small scrubbings or cuts or whatever, that's up to the discretion of the city manager, but he does not have the discretion to cut 20% with recommendations. He can only tell us, again, what would have to be cut, and we have to decide what it is we, as a council, are prepared to cut from the vision of the city. You mentioned many things, Phil, I won't go through them, only to say that there was a few things I agree with, most of which I did not agree with, and I have a fundamental disagreement with you on how capital markets work. You simply don't seem to have a sense of what investors are looking for, but we won't use this as a place for tutorial. If you want to do this outside offline, I'll be glad to tell you with greater precision how you get the lowest possible rate, what they look for, and what is it that they get very nervous when they hear. And I want to make that clear. Thank you very much.
Other council members?
If I could just say, you know, a tutorial directed to me is fine. I do think the community would benefit from a broader discussion. I think the discussion that we've had about the fund balance, the providing of information about, you know, the national standards and so forth, has been useful. I think there's a greater understanding of why we keep the money that we keep now than there was at the beginning of our process. I think as we go to bond on these major projects, if there's similar kind of information that can be very persuasive, if there's some expert or consultant who can be brought in to tell us, you know, that, I mean, what you said is as low as possible, you know, that's one option, but as low as it can be relative to the other needs that need to be addressed, you know, suggests a range of how we behave ourselves financially that I think the community would benefit from discussing. So, it doesn't appear that we are all in for one approach to the exclusion of the other needs and interests. And the taxpayers' needs and interests are, you know, just as a practical matter, not always the first thing that comes up in these discussions naturally, because we all know there are more needs than we could possibly ever meet, and we want to meet as many of them as we can. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I think that wraps up council member comments. Are there any non-budgetary matters that council members need to report on or discuss?
Mr. Duncan? I just wanted to, in reference to the organ donor proclamation, thank the mayor for that, and mention that Falls Church has its own story in that regard. Some of you, I'm sure, are familiar with the young man, Richard Marsh, who tragically died suddenly a couple of years back, and his mother, Rena Marsh, is a citizen here. And I just saw a Facebook posting the other day by Rena, saying she had met someone who had been a recipient of some of the organs that Richard had been a recipient of some of the organs that Richard had donated, and how meaningful that was to her, and, you know, again, what a great thing it is for people who participate in that program. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, vice members? Vice Mayor Snyder?
Very quickly, I'd like to thank so many of our citizens who have engaged in a lot of activities between the times that we meet, and particularly the group that worked on the Civil War Trail signs. That was an amazing result, and it really, it's part of our community that I think is going to hold us in good stead in the future, that this is a place, it's a real place with real history, and this is a small component part of our long-term sustainability. So I want to thank everyone involved in that effort. Also, we've got a cleanup coming up, don't we, this Saturday? So we ought to make that point as well. This is one of the great fun things that the community does. Well, can I do that instead of the budget town hall? No, just kidding.
They do have the last.
They do indeed.
Yeah. Maybe, well, maybe we can find a way to do both, but it's one of the great examples of the community turning out, business support. And again, I think it's this kind of community cohesiveness that I think is important to all of us to protect and to carry forward into the future. So, thanks.
Anyone else?
Very quickly, the council of governments is meeting on Wednesday. There will be a proposal that I think you all have seen from Loudon, Fairfax, and Alexandria that unfortunately isn't really a compromise. If it was, it would be worth consideration, but it rejects anything, kicks things off for a long-term study, so I don't plan to support that. We'll see how the debate goes. Clearly, maintaining COG is very important to us, but I just, I haven't seen a compromise yet that looks like a real compromise, but I'll share information as it comes available to council. Thank you for your engagement in the issue.
And council, I unfortunately won't be able to make that meeting, so Vice Mayor Snyder's going to be voting on behalf of the city. So I just wanted to make sure, as I'm dialoguing with other board members, that council is supportive of not supporting that and supporting the original motion that was put forward. So.
Just ask a question. How does that work? Do we get an equal vote in Fairfax County or some other program?
No. No, it's based on membership.
Population.
Yeah. So I think Fairfax has got, what, two or three members, Dan?
Well, yeah. It's not strictly by population, it's by the number of members actually on the board, and Fairfax County has two or three. I think you're right. Yeah.
So we have one.
That's pretty good, though.
Yeah.
Most representation we get in.
All right. We are on to the minutes. I had one edit on the minutes. This is at line 252. I believe that should be, he also wanted the issue of getting rid of the cable television station taken off the table.
Right. I love it. Was that what you said?
Yeah, or else it's the opposite of what I said.
Yeah, exactly.
The line, I circled this, too. You did want the issue of getting rid of the cable station to be taken off the table.
I think it was too many nods in that, but it should be, also, he wanted the issue of getting rid of the cable television station taken off the table.
Oh, okay, you could say it that way, too.
Could say it more.
That's what happens when I don't have typewritten notes.
That's right. There you go.
All right, that's the only edit I had. Any other edits, council member? All right. If I can get a motion to approve the minutes for March 11th as amended.
No, you, please, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I move to amend, to approve the minutes as amended, March 12, 11.
March 13.
No.
What?
Drafts? It says Monday, March 11, 2013.
You got it. All right. A second, please.
I'd be delighted to second that motion.
Ms. Barry on the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. The meeting agenda, or?
Hold on a minute.
Yes?
Don't stop. Adhere?
No, I'm not there yet.
Oh, okay.
The minutes as amended of March 11, 2013 are approved. If I can get a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
If I can get a second, please? It's Mr. Callen on the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We're adjourned. Thank you, council. See you all Thursday.